Good evening, everyone. It is time for the Committee of the Whole. Can I have roll call, please, Madam Clerk? Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donaworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Oh, she's here.
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is Alderman Bolton out in the hallway there, or... Oh.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Okay. So we have a quorum. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have a first and a second on a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes from Monday, February 5th, 2024? I need a first and a second.
I so move.
Second.
Okay, so that was Alderman Guzman and Alderman Felix. Can we just do a voice vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any audience member want to speak on anything on this agenda for Committee of the Whole? Under old business, the regulation of sale of unregulated hemp products, and this was initially sponsored by me, where I had initially put it as there would be no sale of hemp products, but during discussion, it was decided that we would sell it, but we need to have some conditions on it, meaning what age limit would you do it? Since this is basically a, really no different than marijuana, then I think probably we should stay with age 21, like it is at the dispensaries. That would be my suggestion, but it's open for discussion.
Mayor Taylor, would you like me to run through the presentation really quickly?
Sure. Absolutely.
Just for benefit. Okay, if we can go to the next slide. As Mayor Taylor said, her original proposal was to define these substances, which are basically intoxicating substances that come from one of two sources, either the exotic plant kratom, or basically THC that is synthesized from industrial hemp, rather than the cannabis that is sold in dispensaries pursuant to the Cannabis and Regulation Tax Act, or the Medical Cannabis Act that allows for dispensaries to operate in Illinois, these THC products. They are marketed under a number of different labels, whether it be Delta-8, Delta-10, THCO. As I said, they're chemically synthesized from industrial hemp. They have similar, and depending on the product, sometimes more intense effects than cannabis. They are not regulated either by the federal government or the state government. They're not scheduled, they're not on the narcotics schedule, and nor are they approved for sale by the FDA. They're not subject to state taxes on cannabis, and there is no current age limit on sales. With kratom, which once again is derived from an exotic plant from Southeast Asia, it can have, interestingly enough, both stimulative and sedative effects, and the FDA does not allow it, allow it to be marketed as a drug, dietary supplement, or food additive, but once again, it is not prohibited by law. Illinois has adopted a law that says that it is not permitted to be sold to persons under 18. That is a state law. The city could adopt a more stringent law than that. Moving on to the next slide. So the current proposal that was proposed by Alderman Guzman, and who gained the vote of a majority of the Committee of the Whole, was to create a license category for this that would allow the sale under certain conditions. There would be a minimum age, and there was discussion of whether it should be 18 or 21, and we can discuss that further tonight, that a similar distance requirement should be imposed on the sale of these products that would be no less stringent than what is required for cannabis, which would prohibit sales within 1,000 feet of nursery schools, preschools, primary, secondary school, licensed childcare facility, public park, public library, recreational center, arcade. Those distance limits are taken directly from the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. And no onsite consumption. That is something that is also prohibited for dispensary, for cannabis dispensaries. So, final slide. Questions for the council to address. We have a draft ordinance that was put up on board docs and is available for the public to review, is what should be the minimum age for sales and purchases, whether it should be 18 or 21? Alcohol sales, cigarette sales are 21, and cannabis is 21. So kratom, though, as I said, state rule is 18. What should be the fee to obtain a license if you, if the city council decides to establish a license? And then, should the retail establishment be required to obtain a conditional use permit like cannabis dispensaries? Cannabis dispensaries are subject to our zoning laws, which prevent them from obtaining, being able to locate unless they get a conditional use permit. They have to go through the PCC. We have two of them that have gone through that process, which is Planet 13 and Ivy Hall. And the question is, if someone wants to sell these products, which are very similar in effect, should they be required to go through that process? That is the conclusion of my report. As I mentioned, there was a draft ordinance in the packet. If there are five, if there are five votes to go forward with this tonight, that ordinance, in whatever form it passes out of committee, would then end up on the city council floor in two weeks, under new business. If this does not garner five votes, then pursuant to the rules that we have mutually agreed upon for Committee of the Whole, this proposal would die.
I will say, I would highly encourage the age 21. I mean, I will still go back and say personally, in our community, where we have such young children exposed to some of this stuff that have no idea, nor do the parents understand what it is. I think for the protection of our children, just like the governor has now talked about energy drinks in the state of Illinois, and how harmful they are to children, I think there's times that the government has to say, we need to look at this seriously, because it can cause addiction problems. So, but if we decide to move it forward, I think there needs to be some of the guidelines that there are with cannabis for the protection of our children. So Alderman Florian.
Well, just to, just to be a procedural nitpicker, I don't know if we have a motion and a second yet on this to start discussion, so.
I so move.
Okay. Alderman Guzman, a second.
Second.
Alderman Felix. Alderman Florian.
Well, I didn't realize we had to go through that process still. I was going to say, based on some discussions I have, I think we may have five votes up here to ban the sale completely of this. So at whatever point it's appropriate, I would like to amend the motion and vote on banning the sale completely, as the mayor originally suggested. And I find it ironic, as Alderman Hayes pointed out the last time, that we have, the same night we're voting on a public safety committee, we're talking about selling unregulated hemp products, possibly to 18-year-olds, maybe 21-year-olds, but unregulated, unregulated, unknown. I have told Stu's story many times about the lemonade from, I forget what community it was, but it had the amount of THC that a half a bottle of gummies would have in one lemonade, and we're going to have 18-year-olds walking around doing this, just because someone might go to another community and buy it there instead? And, and as he said, we can't tax it like we do marijuana, so we can't even justify that we're going to really be making any money off of this. And as Alderman Bolton pointed out, as an addiction counselor, she thinks this is a bad idea. I mean, I just, I think it's really kind of ludicrous on our part to even consider doing something like this in our community when we have so many problems. I'm sure Alderman Martinez sees it in his work every day, in where he works, you know? I mean, the police department, I just, it just flabbergasts me.
I would just second, whenever it is appropriate, Alderman Florian's motion to amend.
Okay, so now, the, the question is, we had, we had a motion and a second to move forward with this ordinance as it is. Alderman Guzman had asked, basically, since that was the original proposal and then it has been amended, can that actually, can we go back to that motion? And the answer is, basically, you have not taken a final action on this until the city council, the full city council has voted. So a motion, this would not actually be like a motion to reconsider a dead item. This would more or less be a motion to go back to the original. So there is, I, now, Alderman Florian, I don't believe that you made a formal motion.
Well, I didn't know if it was appropriate or not. Can I?
Before she does, I'd like to make a comment.
Hold on. So, I was asking, the point of procedure, is that what you're, are you, are you asking if you can make a motion to further amend this?
Yes.
Oh, you could do, yes, you could do a motion to amend, and then that would be discussed and voted upon, and then we would go back to, basically, if that fails, then we would go back to the original motion.
I would like to amend the original motion to ban the sale completely of these products in our community to anyone.
Actually, before we go, actually, before we even go into that, we need to go back to the minutes, okay? Because this was the original, it was already motion in the last Committee of the Whole, which everybody was present, which was denied, that received five votes of denial, and gone to this point. So there's actually only two, the two, only two procedural that could be done. Either this goes, or it fails, and it stays the way it is right now. If we could go back to the minutes and discuss this, because I think...
I, I can go back to the minutes to see if the original motion was ever actually voted on. I don't believe it was. I believe your amendment was voted on, but I can go back, I will go back and look at them right now.
Do you want to continue discussing on this, or would you like to go to the next item, and why we looked that up?
We could go to the next item, that's fine.
We can go for the next one as well.
Okay. The discussion of passive speed control devices, speed humps, bumps, and tables, and this was Alderman Turner, who continued from February 5th. So, can I have risk management? And the police are not here, right? Because you, but is Chief Paiser here? Is he hiding back there?
No.
Okay. Do you guys want to come up and talk about this, because we're doing the presentation? But let's talk, have you guys talk before we do the whole presentation, because we'll come back to the first item.
No one's talked to me about it, so I'm very curious to hear what they have to say.
I know you both have talked about this before in some capacities. As a risk manager, I'm going to have you talk about what the procedure is, why it is, how it affects liability and insurance in the whole nine yards.
Well, last year, we, we did develop a procedure, probably a year and a half ago now, 18 months ago, when we looked at, we looked at three roads that Alderman Turner presented. Really, the procedure, let me find my notes. I didn't know I was going over. It involved doing a study of the roadways that you guys present. The first step, it, would we go, would go do a speed study, see how many people are actually speeding on the roads. We were looking for a certain percentage of speeders on the roads to justify a speed hump. If that percentage wasn't met, the, the study would be stopped, and we'd go to the next road, or stop talking about speed humps on that certain section. If their percentage of speeders were as great as we thought they were, the next step would be to send a survey out to the residents on that street to see, do they support a speed hump on, on the street, or don't they support a speed hump? Because they're probably the most affected people with speed humps on streets. We were looking for at least 50% of the residents on that street to respond to that survey. Obviously, if they didn't respond right away, we'd send additional surveys out, and we did develop a survey form for the, the speed humps that, when we looked at those three streets a year and a half ago. Then if the, enough residents weren't in support of it, we wouldn't keep it going along the process. If they were supportive, and we justified it, then it would be to put a speed hump on that street. I'll, I'll tell you from risk, most people think risk are the no people. Really, we're the yes-but people. We're not saying that you should have them, shouldn't have them, but there are liabilities to putting a speed hump on streets. And that's why we came up with that procedure, was it's not something that City of Waukegan Risk Management came up with, is National Highway Safety came up that, and that's, if you look at the City of Evanston, we took that survey right from the City of Evanston and their, their procedures. You okay?
Yeah.
Your new seats are coming soon, so don't worry. Well, that's why your new seats will be here by, for our next board meeting. And we took that procedure right from the City of Evanston, and their survey right from the City of Evanston, what they've been using for years, and how they determine where to put speed humps. Where we look at it as a risk standpoint, is our insurer says that we're putting a, speed humps are considered an insurance industry mind, in the risk mind, as you're putting a hazard onto the street. Streets are supposed to be smooth and flat. We're putting an obstacle on the street. And that's why our insurers have said, if we put speed humps that aren't permanent ones, that aren't, and don't follow this procedure that they've developed, and the federal highway, and the other cities are using, they'll exclude them from our policy. Which will mean that we will hold the liability if someone gets injured on that speed hump, whether it's a bicyclist, someone riding a bike.
Just wanted to make sure, because I remember when you, we had the briefing, as long as, for that part, as long as we meet some kind of standard that they have, it would be covered, right?
The procedure comes right from the federal highway, so then we would...
Then it would cover it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But if we vary from that procedure, or don't run or do a procedure, they, they'll exclude them from our policy.
Okay, so I heard you multiple times saying that it's a procedure, so we could rewrite the procedure that's being done, because that's all the, that's all the insurance asks for a certain procedure. And then if we go with the other way, I mean, I've been waiting for two stop signs, and what else? On a street still for six months. So that's how long a procedure takes. So let's rewrite the procedure, because your suggestion is, let's face it, only a suggestion. So we could go bypass that suggestion and actually vote for it, and put, change the procedure to be like, okay, if an alderman wants it in his ward, it gets it. If an alderman does not want it in his ward, it doesn't.
That procedure has come from the federal highway authority, and that's what our insurances are going to kind of base their decision off of. You can do what you want.
If you, if you want, we could go back in the minutes. It says right away, and I could quote you, saying that all the insurance asks for is for a procedure. So we could rewrite the procedure.
But that procedure...
And as long as it follows highway and, and state law, I mean, it should go, it should go in.
It doesn't. That's what he's trying to tell you, is the procedure that they're talking about is the one that the highway has adopted, and that says that this is what the protocol is, that you need to go through it.
And if it, if it doesn't, then why on 41 and Skokie, 41 and what is that? I think Park Avenue West, there's a bunch of bumps on the, on the road that slows traffic down. So if it wasn't legal in the state, they wouldn't have that.
Well, they're not...
Okay, and that's IDOT. And that's, that's, I mean, what do they, what do they go from 65 down to, I think, 45, if I remember correctly?
Can you answer the question, though?
Those are on speed humps. That's all I'll say, is that those are rumble strips that are allowed on roadways.
But that's a passive control device, right?
Correct.
It's a slowing down device.
And that's, and that's actually what we're trying to do.
Rumble strips are nowhere in the federal highway guidelines for commu...
Alderman Florian was next, and then I'll have Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. So what, and if I missed this in your presentation tonight, I apologize, but what about the effectiveness of these? Did you address that at all? Because didn't they say that they, they have to be so close to each other in order for them to even be effective?
They recommend that they're, they're on areas where you can't gain high rate of speed, so from a stop sign, a curve within 200 feet, and they recommend they're every 150 to 300 feet apart. If they're further than 300 feet apart, people will start gaining their speed back. Most people, if you go over a speed hump, even if you're in a parking lot, what, you hit the gas, you make, you make up for the speed. They do say there's other better ways, even the speed signs, they find are, are more effective.
That I've read.
Than speed humps.
Yep.
Because they're more of a visual, a speed hump's a deterrent, you go to it, if there's not multiple on the street, you're going to gain that speed, that time back.
Right.
And that's part of like, fire department, police, school buses don't like them, because they are slowing down. I mean, it's seconds, but if you're the one having a heart attack, the seconds may matter to you.
True. I didn't think about that. And, and with stop signs and other things, I know you're not the person that does this, but there's procedures to go through to get those, too. We can't just ask for a stop sign to be put somewhere.
There's studies that are done on all stop signs.
Right. And, and so the cost of these speed humps would be the cost of the study, plus the cost of the hump, speed hump itself, right? And how much are they, each?
Well, our insurer would like permanent ones, and I couldn't tell you what, what the estimates that they all say in what you read, they're about $8,000, they estimate, a speed hump.
Each?
Each. Because they're the length of the road, they're certain, they're engineered, you got to saw it on some of the road, so it's smooth, the edges. That's just what the studies are saying. I, I'm not a road person.
I don't know what permanent cost. I know when Alderman Turner had, Chris ordered them, weren't they $7,000 apiece?
Yes.
Yeah. So, and those were the, those were the removable kinds, so I would imagine the permanent would be more expensive. But I don't have an exact cost on that. Alderman Turner, you were next.
Thank you, ma'am. So I just want to reiterate for everyone that we're not only speaking of speed humps, we're speaking of passive speed mitigation devices. In speaking about speed humps and bumps, I understand that the IDOT, Illinois Department of Transportation, neither regulates speed humps, bumps, nor do they consider them a speed mitigation device. Question, Bob. How does, how does the policy, how does the policy to install these things, the surveys and such, how, how does that mitigate the liability, just because you do a policy and say, we got to figure out?
It just, I think how they look at it is, we're doing steps to verify that it's, the speed hump is needed on that street, and we're doing a study, just like you do for a stop sign. I mean, it's the same reason you do the study for the stop sign, to verify it's needed.
But stop signs and, and, and other traffic control devices are part of that IDOT bible that's about yay thick, right?
Yeah.
So that's not policy that's statute or regulation, right?
Maybe I can answer that in terms of using another example. If many of you have noticed that our police cars all got stripes on the back of their cars in the last couple of weeks, on the back of them, and that was done, well, it looked like zebras, but I will say, the reason it was done is because insurance is getting to be a problem. We are, we have a lot of lawsuits. We are probably down to one company, maybe two, that will even look at us. One of their suggestions was, you guys have black cars. Our cars were getting hit at accident scenes, even though our lights were on, our cars were still getting hit. So we put those on as a, they're reflective, too, so that our cars are more visible.
Okay.
What that does is now, it makes it that the insurers will look at us and say, well, you're taking steps to help prevent. And that's what this is, is making things so that the insurance companies will not turn around and say, no, you're not doing anything that you, you know, so I'm using a different example.
What's the hazard or the liability for doing nothing? Because we have an epidemic of speeding vehicles, right? We have it, and we all know where it is. It's up there on Lewis, it's on Sunset, it's on Delaney.
It's everywhere.
It's on everywhere. It's on the side streets. I'll bet you, every alderman here has had complaints about people speeding on the side streets. So what's the liability if we do nothing, particularly in that we have aldermen asking for these speed mitigation devices, and we don't do it, then somebody gets hit or killed or something, then what's the liability going to be there?
Really, the city itself, very minimal liability on us, because we have the streets, and we have law enforcement enforce the laws, so the liability is really on the driver of the vehicle.
It's kind of back to like, not having a lifeguard on the lakefront. If you put the lifeguard there, then we have liability. If the lifeguard isn't there, then there's no implied liability there, because we, we don't supply that, it is up to you to supply your supervision.
What about the potholes that grow in our streets? And then, doesn't it?
We pay on potholes.
We pay thousands of dollars a year for potholes on our streets.
Yeah.
A good example is we're paying right now.
I hit 70 miles an hour down on 41.
Paid about $7,000 for a liability suit for a guy driving a bicycle on the sidewalk. We got out of it, but it still costs us that amount of money to get out of liability, because he was riding in this part of town that you can't ride a bicycle on the sidewalk.
So, and you guys mentioned that you talked to Evanston, but there are also innumerable, innumerable speed bumps and humps in Chicago with signage. They have roundabouts and so forth, also locally in Lake County, I saw them out there in Engleside. It sounds like to me, I think, that we really need to look at a multifaceted speed mitigation program to include all of the things mentioned here, the speed bumps, the speed, well, the speed humps, and the signage, and the rumble strips, et cetera, even maybe some go-arounds. We have, we all know it, it's a severe problem, and it's particularly in the summertime. So this is something that we never even look at. Then, and before we move on, because I see Alderman Felix has his hand up, but I do want to point out that speed bumps have been installed on city streets without any surveys. They were done down at the, at the beach and at the harbor. There was no policy followed, no surveys, none of that stuff, and they just got it done. And finally, I just happened, last week, I just happened to pass Northbound on Macarried, looked down the entry to Clearview Park, turned around, went in there, you got a big old speed bump, speed hump, big old hump, and several speed bumps. So how do they get away with the liability?
You're the Park District.
Right. So it's public property, belongs to the taxi?
Park District.
Yeah, it's Park District, I understand that. But I'm saying, if you're talking about liabilities and not being effective, why is, how does that fit?
Yeah.
Right. And I'm saying, and so I'm suggesting that, I don't think it is a liability, but if so, we have a problem that, that needs to be solved, and this is one way to solve it.
And I certainly would love your input.
We don't have enough police officers, that we don't have a traffic enforcement unit dedicated, this is, this is our solution. Thank you.
We are doing traffic enforcement, there's been a lot of citations issued, but what I will say is, I would love your input, because you yourself have said how many times you've had speeding tickets. I think we need to know what makes you...
Not in Waukegan.
What makes you think that, like, from your point of view, what would help you as an individual? I mean, the, these are inputs that we need to have. It's important. Alderman Hayes, you were next.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to point out, one of the practical aspects of this is that if you put a speed bump on one street, you're going to have to put another speed bump every, I don't know, 100 yards, 300 feet, whatever the, the number might be, I don't know. And then, so on many streets, you're going to have to put many speed bumps, and then people might decide to just go a block over. speed bumps. And then people might decide to just go a block over or cut through. So now we are putting them all over the city, and at seven to ten thousand dollars a pop, I'm not even sure that we have the money to be able to do that. But it's not, it's not going to solve the problem. If it, if we, it's, it's whack-a-mole. You might solve the problem on one street, and then you're going to create a problem on another street. You're also going to have the homeowners that are in front of the speed hump that say, I didn't want that thing in front of my house. My kids play here, they ride their bikes here. Or now I'm getting cars that come to a stop, and then they hit the gas and I can hear them, it's right in front of my house every time. So there are other implications, I think, that we, we need to consider when discussing this. I don't think any of us will disagree with the point that speeding is an issue in the city. Perhaps a, a strong first step might be to utilize what I think the police has as some funds for signs, or maybe some DUI-related funds that might be able to purchase additional electronic signs or whatever the terminology is for the electronic speed signs. That might be helpful, and I think as of right now, we might have one in operation. So.
A bunch.
Oh, we have more now? Okay.
There were ten of them when I put.
Got the grant. All right, so we can use the grant funds.
So there were already ten.
Yep. All right, so we can use the grant funds, we can use the DUI funds that the police might have, and that might be a strong step in the right direction, and we can see how that works and strategically place those as part of a study in looking at where speed bumps may be most effective.
Well, we've had the, had the money for that through that grant for several months, and they haven't gone in yet. Also, those signs were probably going to go, I think we, we had talked about putting them in school zones and, and, and major thoroughfares, which I'm not talking about putting speed humps in, humps in the major thoroughfares. I'm more specifically focusing on the side streets, right? On the main thoroughfares, like on my street, Jackson, I would envision rumble strips. So I, I think, and obviously, I've been pushing for this for a long time, for like twenty years I've been trying to get this stuff done with all these different mayors. Everyone's resistant to it. I'm, I'm very delighted that at least we're having this discussion, and maybe we need more information. I don't want to keep going back to what Evanston is doing because there are other communities that have them, and I think if anything, maybe we should talk to some of these other folks.
Okay, before we go there, before I have Chief Pazer talk, Alderman Felix had a question, and then I'm going to have Chief Pazer call, and then I'll have both of you because you came later. Chief, or I'm sorry, Alderman Felix?
I think that one of the things that, the good thing that we can discuss is that if you don't want speed bumps in your ward, you don't have to have them. I'm not, I'm for this, but I'm not saying I'm going to have speed bumps all over my ward. I have to talk to my constituents and see if that's something that they, they would want, you know? But just saying no, I, I don't think that's something that we should move forward to. You know, we should have the ability to ask our constituents. Alderman Turner has his constituents. He has a lot of votes. He had a lot of people that showed up for him. So, I mean, that, that'd be for him to talk to his constituents and see where they would want it. So I think that that's one thing that, when we're saying the speed bumps, that one's going to pop up in every street, I don't think that's true. That totally depends on us. It's not going to go out of hand or anything like that. So I think, I think that if this moves forward, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to talk to our constituents as to where that's going to go. But that'd be us in our wards, talking to our constituents instead of just saying, no, eliminating that, that, because it could work in some areas and some wards, and some others they won't, and people won't be for it. But I think that this is something that we should be able to utilize if we need to.
Chief Pazer? Chief Pazer, would you like to come up and talk from, because I know that was something Alderman Florian was going to ask, and since he's here, I'm going to have you talk about from an ambulance point of view. And I know Chief Navarro was going to talk about it. I don't know, should we, I don't want to put you on the spot, Deputy Chief, to talk about it. So.
It's up to you.
Okay, okay. If you want to come up with them and talk both from a public, safe, whatever.
I don't have any statistical data like Bob just presented. For us, it is, it's time. Somebody said seconds save lives, and it does. For every speed bump that we have to go down, you have to understand that for a fire engine, you're talking anywhere between fifty and eighty thousand pounds for each vehicle. And they don't do very well on speed bumps. An ambulance, it's not the weight, it's how much it's going to bounce around either a patient who's in the back or the crew that's in the front trying to get, trying to save a second or two to get to a call to help somebody out. So for us, it's time. It's also wear and tear on our vehicles. Even if there's nobody in the back, even if we're not going to a call, even if we're just driving to or from a call, it really, really beats up our heavy vehicles. So we're not fans of them. And I think everybody can probably understand that in a parking lot, Whispering Oaks is a perfect example. They have speed bumps in Whispering Oaks parking lot, and we do everything in our power-to-drive right around the speed bumps. Alderman Hayes had a good point where he said that they're going to go down different streets, and that's exactly what we'll do. So the main thoroughfares that have the speed bumps, we're going to avoid. A, because we might have a patient in the back, and B, because we don't want our rigs to get beat up. So we're going to go down side streets that don't have them, and then it's going to upset the neighbors on those streets that we're driving up and down. So for us, we don't recommend them because it's a lot of wear and tear on our rigs, and it's also bad for the patients that are back, and it slows our response time down either to the house, the residents, or to the hospital. Are these questions for me?
Alderman, go ahead first, and then I'll go.
Yeah, I really advocate with Alderman Turner. Something needs to be done. I hear you saying it's a risk, it's a liability, but I've been a victim three times. My car hit because of speeding. So if we can implement something, it needs definitely be to be addressed.
Okay, actually, I was next.
Alderman Guzman was next.
Okay, so, okay, you said that it beats up on the equipment and stuff like that, you avoid them and everything. So how does it, how does it work in the city of Chicago where they actually have speed bumps that are huge, and they're all over the place? Same thing with Evanston. And, I mean, if you want to talk about seconds, then, I mean, how long are we wasting right now to going to, to Condel Hospital and Lake Forest Hospital, wasting time that way from not having a trauma two or trauma one hospital? So that's time of its own. So if you want to go that way, then we could go that way. But it does reduce the ti, speeding on the side streets. I've already talked to Lake County, and they're more than happy to, because I have a middle school, I have Catholic Charities, and I have a church right there on Lewis Avenue. And you have a speed control system there that's flashing all the time, and that's been up there for years. And that has, hasn't slowed anybody down. So I've already talked to the counties, tried to get some rumble sticks there. And they're open for the suggestion on it to, to slow these people down. Okay? So, I mean, I like the idea. I want them in my ward, and it should go forward.
If I could just comment.
Wait, wait, wait. Alderman Newsom was next.
I think I, risk management. I left you a message regarding a system that is in the city of Chicago. They don't have speed bumps or humps, but they have a camera system that generates speeding tickets to residents that are speeding around schools, daycares, churches, and they are kind of like the red light camera system where if you're speeding, they will generate you a citation, just like a red light camera. The first one is a warning, and then after that, you are issued a speeding ticket. And they send you the date, the time, your license plate number, all of that stuff. And it's, it eliminates putting speed humps and bumps in the street, but it still makes people aware that if you're in this area, you need to slow down because you're going to be generated a citation.
Yeah, unfortunately, in, in the state of Illinois, you have to have a population of over one million, or you can't have that. So we would love to have that in place, especially to complement our red light camera system. Unfortunately, Waukegan doesn't fit the size. So we've looked into that. We can't have that. So even like the speed trailers we have, we would hope to have like software installed in there that maybe issue a warning ticket. We can't even do that. So under the current legislation now, that's just not an option for us. But we definitely would be open to that if we can get that legislation changed. I think it's a great idea. It's a great deterrent. You know, if you ever drive through the city, your first one's a warning, the second one, you get a ticket. And, you know, I think that, that really hits, hits home with that. Same with our red light tickets. Just unfortunately, we just can't do it. We'd love to do it, though.
If I can just comment right quickly. I mean, I, I think what we have to decide here tonight, are we going to be a metrop, a metropolis, or are we going to be a city of progress? Because I don't want this to turn into a Chicago where, you know, everywhere you go, there's another speed bump, there's a speed bump, and they're got, like the gentleman said, people are going to find ways to go around it. So I think that we, we really need to reconsider it and, and really access what we're doing here. Because again, you know, I don't want this again, you know, first we got speed bumps, and then we're going to have something, where, where is the city of progress? We're not moving. We're kind of moving backwards. And I think that we really need to consider that. And I, I'm not for it, and I'm sorry. I, there are circumstances that may allow us, and I, I, I look at the safety part of it, but we really need to look at it. And do we really want this to be another Chicago where there's, and there are fine ways around it. So, I'm not for it.
We're going to do, Corporate Counsel will talk next, and then, okay, I'll let you go.
No, I, I was just going to confirm what DC Chastain had said, that the, Illinois has a very ingenious way of saying Chicago is special by writing laws that don't ever mention the city of Chicago, but say that only cities above one million can do this. And considering that Illinois has a bunch of little towns and not many big ones, that's how they get away with that. And there's been not any appetite in the General Assembly to expand that, partially due to the scandals that have occurred with regard to red light camera operators, not so much the speed camera operators.
Okay, last comment, and then we're going to.
One more after that.
Who was next?
Mine's, mine's actually.
Those two, and then that's it?
Okay, mine's actually really quick. The way I see it, if you don't want it in your ward, you don't have to have it. But vote for it and let the people who want it have it in their ward, because it's, I mean, basically, it's my ward, and my residents decide what's going on in my ward, and not you deciding what's going in my ward. If my residents wants the speed bumps, I should be able to have it. If your residents don't want it, then don't put it in there. As easy as that.
So this is just for discussion right now. There's nothing on the table. You know, there's no motion. But we will go back to number one and do that one. Alderman Donahue?
Thank you. I've been waiting for this. I've had numerous residents in my ward, they want the speed bumps, speed humps, anything to slow these people down, especially around the schools, North Avenue, they're, they're, they're crazy over there. And I've probably had maybe ten or fifteen people call me that say they want this. They want, want something done to try to slow them down, because we definitely don't want to see a kid hit. We don't want to see anybody hit. But once you start slowing people down, I think it's, you know, going to really work. And I'm all for those tickets. I have no problem with that. But if we can't do it, then there's nothing we can do on that.
Okay, so this is just a discussion, so there's no vote at this point. That'll be put on the next committee of the whole? Am I?
Actually, if there's no motion, I'll put a motion to come, for this to come up for vote.
I'll second.
But to what?
The speed humps, bumps, and passive.
Passive speed mitigation devices to be installed at request of the Alderman.
Is there a limit on those? Because what happens if one Alderman wants them every street? Like, I, I, yeah, how are you going to pay for it? There's only going to be X amount in a budget. Where is that going to come out of? And is there a number on how many an Alderman can ask? Because what if you want them on every street, and some other Alderman doesn't want any of them?
Pick a number, twelve per year, three per year. But we need to do something. You know, I can, I think about down there in Alderman, Bolton's Ward, particularly on MLK, south of Belvedere, I mean, down by Helm Holes and all the way down to Temps Street. I mean, them fools are rolling.
And McAllister.
I think about Alderman Newsom's street over there on Grove, and I've been over there, and I see them going down your street pretty fast, and Westmoreland. So there's a real problem here. And again, maybe it's not, it's not all perfect. Maybe we don't have all the answers for the entire city, but we've got to take some action. And we cannot be afraid to take risks. We can't live in a, in a bubble of what if and what, what might be. We, we know what could happen with these speeding cars, and as was pointed out, a number of, it's not just us Aldermen who are saying this, we're speaking for our residents, our neighbors, who are saying they're coming to us with this problem. So I, I think it's imperative that we take some action.
One of the things that, like, so you're saying you want them by a school. What if the school doesn't want them?
What about the kids on a school bus who don't have seatbelts on?
Actually, I have a couple of schools that want them. I have Washington, and then I have.
There's nothing, there's nothing to vote on tonight because we don't have anything prepared. We have, we have very, very limited information. We have no idea how much this will cost. And frankly, I don't think there's anything in the city that is just, the Alderman says, I want this, so you get it. That is, that is not, not at all how it works. So to, to try to vote on a motion that says an Alderman can have as many speed bumps as they want without consideration for the money, the location, who's going to install it, how it's going to be maintained, and the implications on the fire department, the police department, and all the other residents. It's just uninformed, and, and it would be very, very hasty.
Actually, we already have a first and a second, so it moves forward.
I don't know what the motion is.
The motion?
It's a movement?
To put up for vote.
We have fourteen minutes. If we could move on.
I put a motion to put up for vote for passive speed control devices.
Oh, wow.
A motion for passive speed control devices. What does that mean?
Humps, bumps.
Eat humps, bumps, and rumble strips, and lights, and signs.
How many?
What is that motion? What are you saying that motion is? Alderman Turner gave some, some flesh to this, but I don't know what that means. Is it that you want to consider a new policy, that you want to, if there is, if there's ordinance language, if there's resolution, if you want us to prepare something? I need to know specifically what it is. What the motion has been given is a concept, or it's a topic. It is not, I don't have direction.
Well, why don't we bring this back at the next committee of the whole and talk to Corporate Counsel and get it in a motion form?
Can we do a subcommittee of this committee to, to speak to, just so we get a couple of Aldermen and this, and the Corporation Council? We've been, we've been fussing around with this thing since August.
Well, here's, part of the problem is, some of this can be resolved by you talking to the department heads and talking to Corporate Counsel. Sometimes, we started this committee of the whole in October, and sometimes people are just talking to the department head this last week. There's been all this time to talk and get some of this in place. I feel like on one hand, we've talked about there's too many levels of government, and then now we want to keep adding and adding and adding in more committees, more subcommittees. Why don't we just have that discussion with Corporate Counsel and put it in a motion form and have it brought back at the next one?
Who is going to have that discussion with Corporate Counsel? Shall it be me and Alderman Guzman?
Yep, because you two have, you two have raised that issue, so you need to talk to Corporate Counsel how you want that put in.
All right, done. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go back, because we only have time for one more, because we're not going to hold the meeting up tonight. We'll go back to number one. It was actually voted on, Alderman Guzman, so you were right. So what you're voting on is this regulation of sale of unregulated hemp products. But was it totally defined as with an age limit or anything else?
Okay, so, and just, just to be clear, and this is for the benefit of the clerk and the benefit of the record, the motion that Alderman Florian made, basically at my suggestion, I'm making a, I'm making a determination that that was not proper. Because as Alderman Guzman pointed out, at the February fifth, February sixth meeting of the committee of the whole, which was our last one, that motion actually failed. For that specific thing to come up, again, you would need to do a motion to reconsider. A motion to reconsider can only be brought by someone who, from the prevailing side, who voted it down. And according to the minutes, the folks who voted against creating a prohibition of unregulated hemp products were Alderman Felix, Alderman Turner, Alderman Donahue, Alderman Guzman, and Alderman Martinez. Only those folks would be available to make a motion to reconsider at this time. If none of them want to make a motion to reconsider, then we go to Alderman Guzman's proposal, which I would ask you provide some direction on the blanks that need to be filled in.
Okay, so it would be, I still feel it should be eighteen years old because of, I mean, you could sign up at eighteen years. I, okay, so this is one of the few states that require twenty-one for a lot of stuff. So eighteen years old, you can be, basically, you can go to war. You can be sentenced to life imprisonment without the possibility to par. life imprisonment without the possibility of parole, at eighteen years old. So that states, that stating, you are more than enough an adult to decide if you're going to, however this is, inhale to, either smoke it, or however it's done, I'm not even sure how this thing is done.
Are you familiar, Alderman Guzman, that there's already an ordinance in our city that you can't buy cigarettes under the age of twenty-one? So why would you allow unregulated hemp to be bought at eighteen, when you can't buy cigarettes until twenty-one?
And, like I just said, it's because of those two reasons. I don't believe it should be twenty-one, it should be, if you're, if you are able to be sentenced for life imprisonment, oh, I could be sentenced for life imprisonment, but I can't smoke a cigarette? Come on. I could go to war, I could go to, I could go sign up to war at eighteen years old and get sent anywhere in the world and start shooting people, and, but I can't smoke a cigarette? I mean...
Alderman Martinez?
I'd just like to say that I'd like to make a motion to reconsider. We have to look at the moral issue here, I mean, I've been a mentor for almost forty-five years, mentoring at-risk teens, and so, if we were allowed that, well, to me, it's a moral issue, and if we allow that even at twenty-one, what are we letting people know out there, that it's okay, like, we're sugarcoating that? And our way of wanting it is because we want to get extra revenue in, you know, nickel and dime these people, when, if that gets in the wrong hands, and it's not even regulated, and if the state has no information on it, then we need to go and follow suit. I just don't want it, you know, it'll be double standard me, and I wear what I preach on my sleeve, you know, I, like I said, I work with at-risk teens, I currently am a clinician at the Lake Behavioral, and we have groups, so shame on me for voting for it the first time, but I adamant, and I think that we need to get that crap out of Waukegan.
You want to, you want to make a motion to reconsider?
Reconsider it, to take, yeah, the original vote.
The motion to reconsider, what you're asking for is a motion to reconsider which can be made at the meeting where a motion fails, or in the subsequent meeting. This is the subsequent meeting of the Committee of the Whole. And, so, it would be a motion to reconsider banning the sale of unregulated hemp THC and kratom products. That motion needs to be made by someone from the prevailing side, that constitutes Alderman Martinez, it can be seconded by anyone.
Second. Alderman Florian? Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
You want to allow discussion on the motion to reconsider?
Do you want to allow discussion? I mean, I want to cut this off at seven.
Right.
So just, and just to keep in mind, the motion, all the motion to reconsider does is it puts it back on the agenda, so it will be on the agenda at the next committee of the whole. This would not actually create the ban.
This is just to reconsider it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to discuss this, before we go, we gotta have some kind of discussion, we can't just move forward on it. So, I'll go back to the, to the original proposal, like I said, okay? If you total banned it, let's say you guys banned this in Waukegan, you guys decided to ban this in Waukegan, okay, what is them to stop from going to North Chicago, Gurnee, Beach Park, Zion, and anywhere else? And not bring it here, and, at that point, what is there to stop somebody to create a black market, to go to these places, buy it, and start selling it here under the table?
But you can have that with anything, I mean, we could have had that with cannabis before, and you did.
Well, that, that's...
But other communities are also banning this.
Well, until it becomes a statewide legislation, I mean, there's no, basically, no stopping to this. I mean, so, it goes one city at a time, unless you do all the surrounding areas, because I go down forty-one, I mean, and, what is that, one-seventy-three, there's a huge sign for kratium.
Okay, I'm not gonna debate this too much longer, because I want to start the city council meeting, there's a motion on the floor to reconsider, can I have a roll call on that, Madam Clerk?
But, I'm not done discussing this, I mean, and then other people...
You'll have time during the next, because this is not, this is just to be put on the next agenda, to reconsider.
Correct, I understand that, but there still has to be a discussion, and everybody has to have their opinion, so people can know which way to vote. I understand some people already know how they want to vote, but you tell them, you have to, you have to learn the facts, you have to listen to both sides, and then you decide where you want to go.
But we have heard both sides, haven't we not, or, like, am I being fair here? We've heard both sides.
We've heard.
I, I still haven't given my full opinion, I just, I don't, I just, I mean, you created a...
Would anyone whose mind is gonna be changed by what Alderman Guzman says, please raise their hand? Okay, let's vote.
Oh, here we go, okay, so...
No, this will come back for discussion, though. I think, at this point, I don't want to keep audience members waiting, we already have a late night, there's storms coming tonight, let's curtail this to the next council meeting where it can be discussed again.
Then we could all, then, I like to table this, then.
Well, if, there's a motion, right, I mean...
Well, I like to table it.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yes, I understand that, but then I could table it for more discussion, instead of rushing everything.
There, there, okay, we had a motion to reconsider, the motion to table takes precedence, does the motion to table have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so now, you have to vote, you have to vote on the motion to table this, which would be postponing any further discussion on the motion to reconsider. Now, keep in mind, the motion to reconsider does not actually finalize, would not bring the ban back. All the motion to reconsider would be, would put it on the agenda for the next meeting. So, we have a motion to table, now I'm gonna ask, can you clarify, would this be to table the discussion of the motion to reconsider until the next meeting?
Actually, I thought, if I remember, Corporation Counsel has said multiple times that have, you have spoken to Kelly, that once you table something, as long as you get a second, you do not go for a vote, and we could go back on the minutes and look that up.
No, a motion to table requires a vote.
Oh, how about, a motion to hold does not require a vote, is that the one?
A motion to hold over, does not require a vote, but can be overruled by two-thirds, and would, and only takes you to the next immediate meeting.
I'll put a motion to hold.
Okay, I don't know, I don't believe this has been held over previously, I would have to go back and check, is there a, is there a vote to hold over, or to overturn the hold over?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to overturn the hold over, this is getting a little bit obnoxious. Let's, Alderman Guzman, we know that you're in favor of selling unregulated drugs to eighteen-year-olds, like, you've established that, you've said your piece, now, can we just vote on the motion to reconsider? If you're unwilling to do that, then I'll make my motion to overrule your hold over.
You can make your motion, see if you have the six votes.
Okay, so it looks like, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, this is now a vote to overrule the hold over, it would require six votes to go back to the motion to vote whether or not to reconsider it, which, once again, will just put the ban on the next committee of the whole. Clerk, if you could give a roll call vote for the overrule of the hold over.
Alderman Turner?
No.
Alderman Donahue?
No.
Alderman Florian?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes?
Yes.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Guzman?
No.
Alderman Martinez?
No.
Alderman Felix?
No.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Sorry, ma'am, I'm confused on this now, like...
The I would be to over, the I would be to overturn the hold over, no would be to hold it, to sustain the hold over, and allow the motion to reconsider to be considered at the next committee of the whole, where this will be placed as the first item on, so...
Five, yes, or four?
Not sufficient, five, well, mayor, mayor can vote in committee of the whole as well.
Mayor?
I would overturn the hold, the hold over.
Five, five, not sufficient to overturn the hold over.
So, I...
So, the discussion, the continued discussion of the motion to reconsider a ban on unregulated THC and kratom products within Waukegan is held over until the next committee of the whole meeting, which I don't know if we've actually scheduled.
It'll be at the next city council.
At the next city council meeting, which is March eighteenth.
Eighteenth. Okay, yep, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
A second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
First, Alderman Turner, second, Ms. Alderman Bolton. Okay, five minutes to run to the restroom, and then...